...call us, name the board of Alderman to order. Roll call please, Senator.
Alderman Lee.
Here.
Alderman Madley.
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers.
Here.
Alderman Morath.
Here.
Alderman Wilkins.
Present. Would you have the form of the state, please, to place? Please, don't be polite, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Consent agenda? All that stuff is in your pocket. Good evening, James.
Make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as published.
Motion second to accept the consent agenda as published. Alderman Fairber say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Council table over twelve fifty.
The park repair, was that under warranty?
It was, it was just maintenance. I know it's a pretty high maintenance bill, but there's... When you get filters and that sort of thing, we actually had a couple. It was basically two together. So, we've been... That's why it cost over, what, over twenty-one hundred dollars? It was all filters and, and such. And replacement fluids and... I don't know if there was, I don't think there was a battery included. I don't remember, but it was maintenance. I was not to ask Phil about it. It was a high maintenance bill, but it was maintenance. Make a motion, we approve the unsecured level one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in a grand total amount of five hundred sixty-five thousand eighty-four dollars and thirty-three cents.
Second.
I have a motion, second to accept the council table over twelve fifty in the amount of five hundred sixty-five thousand eighty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Alderman Fairber say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. It's all right with the council. I'd like to switch five, six, seven around. Move seven up to five. We'll do that one right now. And I'd like to make an appointment for the Alderman vacated by Dick Ward's seat. And to fill that seat until the unexpired, for the rest of the unexpired term, I'd like to appoint Robert Hudson to that seat.
Just to clarify.
Yes.
That would, he would be, by ordinance, he would be appointed until April of two thousand eighteen and then be elected to one year, and then be able to run again for a one-year term.
Oh, okay. Okay, so just until the next municipal. Okay. All right.
Second.
I have a motion, second to accept mayor's appointment of Robert Hudson to the position of Alderman Ward Two with the term expiring in April of two thousand eighteen. Alderman Fairber say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. Administrator, the office.
I, Robert Hudson.
I, Robert Hudson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the City of Centralia.
And the ordinances of the City of Centralia.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of Alderman Ward Two.
In the office of Alderman Ward Two.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
According to laws and how we got.
According to laws and how we got.
Can you just, just get a little turn to the...
Little picture.
Yeah. James didn't have a good option.
Did you get the picture you wanted, James?
All right, and with that note, I'll ask for Alderman Dick Ward to come forward, please. So, thank you for your dedicated service as Alderman. First appointed in the electorate. So, as a token of our appreciation, I'd like to present you this plaque from the city.
Thank you.
To you, if you'd like to make those speeches.
I appreciate it. Well, I enjoy things beyond my control.
Right.
I think president.
Well, we understand that, and we come first. So, again, we appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
You want the box? All right. Do you come, please, to the chair? Thank you.
Okay, now, come on, you can come over.
Dick? One more, speaking up. Thank you, Dick.
This to you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dick, don't hesitate to reach out to us if you need something, all right?
Appreciate it.
We have to help the best we can. Thank you. Number six, we'll do now with presentation by Northern District Commissioner Janet.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up today.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
That's your mic if you choose to use it.
This one?
Yeah.
Should I choose to use it?
Well, Ken's handing it out, just so we will not have, the citizens of the city, within the City of Centralia, there will not be a city municipal election for use tax. But there will be, the citizens of Centralia, in, on November seventh, will have the opportunity to vote on the county use tax. It's trying to fill this space.
Fill in the, yeah, fill in the blanks. So, I really, I do appreciate the opportunity to come up here and talk to you about this. And poor Matt has had to listen to this a couple of times now. So, he's, he's getting used to it. And ask you first, and, and I apologize for the double-sided stuff, but we'll try and conserve treats, right? So, if you would, please, turn to this, this, this little graph on the back of the first page. It has the sales tax annual growth rate history for the general fund. And this is based on Boone County's general fund. It's a look at Boone County's general fund from nineteen eighty-four until the present. And if you, if you looked at any municipality within Boone County and probably around the state, you'd see approximately the same thing. But the reason I think it's important to start here is quite honestly because nineteen eighty-four is particularly significant. Nineteen eighty-four, Boone County's population was about a hundred and four thousand people. In two thousand seventeen, our population is around about a hundred and seventy-six thousand people. So, we've grown substantially over that time period. For some of us, we were, we were like working and that kind of thing. Some of you might not have been born in nineteen eighty-four. Or very small people, right? But in nineteen eighty-four, those of us who were out in the workforce, think about what didn't exist in nineteen eighty-four. What didn't exist in nineteen eighty-four was the internet. You know, the office I worked in, they had just gotten computers. And, and so there was no such thing as internet sales. You know, there was very little purchasing being done through even catalog sales. That was just, that was the rarity. Nowadays, that's the norm. And that's why we, we find ourselves coming to voters and trying to educate voters about this issue. So, that's kind of what, those are the two factors that are really informing why, why this use tax issue is critical for a lot of, a lot of governmental entities and indeed for businesses. Again, it's the growth in population and that population is, that growing population is more and more making its sales, making its purchases online, making its purchases through, to, through out-of-state vendors. So, in November, and this, here in Boone County, and this is the next sheet with some use tax ballot issue. November seventh, here in Centralia, and just like me in, because I live in unincorporated Boone County, we'll see one use tax issue on the ballot. Other, in other jurisdictions, in Columbia, in Ashland, in Harrisburg, and, okay, Columbia, Harrisburg, Ashland.
Derby?
No, they're not doing it. So, it's just, so it's just those four right now that are doing it. Columbia, Ashland, Centralia, not Centralia, Columbia, Ashland, Harrisburg, and Boone County. Those four jurisdictions have it on the ballot. Everybody else is, is talking about it, thinking about putting it on later, whatever. But if you live in an unincorporated Boone County or, or in a municipality that hasn't yet put it on the jurors, on the ballot, you'll see one issue. And so, for here in Centralia, you'll see Proposition U. And the language is set forth here in this, in this handout. And the critically important piece of this, because use tax is complicated. It's not just an easy, you know, an easy thing to kind of get your head around. When we make a purchase with a vendor that has what they call nexus, that has a physical presence here in the state of Missouri, that's nexus, we pay sales tax, right? So, if you make a purchase, for instance, from Ritchie and Sons, you pay a sales tax. You pay, you pay the state sales tax, you pay the county sales tax, and you pay the local sales tax, right? If you make a purchase with a vendor that has no nexus here in Missouri, well, actually, the state already has in place a use tax. So, you will find, and if you look on your Amazon bill, you can see where you're already paying the four point two-two-five percent, right? You're already paying that because we have a use tax in place on the state level. But when you look at your Amazon bill, there's no local use tax. And the use tax, in, in my mind, kind of mirrors the sales tax because it's the exact same rate as the sales tax. So, whatever the, you know, here's the state rate, it's four point two-two-five percent. State rate, if it's a sales tax, if it's a use tax. You don't pay double, you don't pay twice, you just pay once, right? So, it's an out-of-state purchase with that out-of-state vendor. And so, that's what we're looking at with this. So, it just, it's at the same rate as the local sales tax would be the use tax that would be imposed if the voters approve it. If the, if the voters say, you know what, we want to raise the rate of the sales tax, the use tax will also rise to the same level. If the voters say, we want to lower it, again, lower the sales tax, the use tax goes down. Same thing. It's just, it's a mirror image of the sales tax. The interesting piece of it also is, and this is statutory language in the ballot, a use tax return doesn't have to be filed by someone who, who, whose purchases from out-of-state vendors don't equal two thousand dollars a year. So, that's like the exemption. No, no return has to be filed unless you exceed that two thousand dollar threshold. So, think about it, if you're not paying a use, if you're not filing that return now, you ain't going to be doing it later, right? That, that exemption will be there for you. So, the mechanics of the use tax during that first paragraph, that large paragraph, but for me, I guess, when I started looking at this, one of the key pieces of why a use tax is put in place is that second, that one-sentence paragraph. The purpose of the proposal is to eliminate the current sales tax advantage, God bless you, that non-Missouri vendors have over Missouri vendors. So, this is kind of, I know you all are the official body, but I'm going to start asking questions. How many of you all have, have businesses? Okay. Mayor, so whenever I think about business people, I think of my Uncle John. He's a businessman in Alabama. And he's always said to me, you know, he said, there's, I, I, when I make sales, he said, I can make deals, but I can only make a deal up to a certain amount because at some point I start cutting into bone, meat and bone. I've, I've got my wiggle room, so I can make a deal. But at some point, there ain't no wiggle room left, right?
Right.
And that's kind of what this use tax addresses. And, and I'd like you for this thought, and, and I hope this has never, this kind of situation has never hit you. But if you take a look at this student housing model, your, your colleague down in Columbia, Maybrakey, has said to us, and, and Matt's colleague in the, in the city manager officer, office down there, has said, those large student high rises, most of those things were built with materials that were shipped in on containers, not just from out-of-state, but from out-of-country. A lot of it from China. And no sales taxes were paid and because we don't have a use tax in, in place, obviously no use tax. But what that does for you as a business person, if you're in the lumber business, for instance, again, there's just so much room you have to make a deal. And if these folks that were building those big apartment complexes said to you as the lumberyard owner, I want to build, I want to buy all my products from you, and this is what I can get it for in China, can you meet that price? Well, you've got your wiggle room left, right? You, you can make your deal up to a point. But to overcome this kind of dollars is impossible. That's cutting, that's cutting most of the skeleton out.
Right.
You know? So, you really just don't have that kind of wiggle room. And that's a pair, you know, that's what they, when they talked to these out-of-state companies that are coming in and building those big apartment complexes, that's what they found. They said, you know, we, you all didn't have a use tax in place. And so, we, we could go out-of-state, out-of-country, buy that product, and bypass the local vendors. And so, that's really what, excuse me, what the use tax is designed to do. It's, on the one hand, it's designed to supplement revenues in governments. And, and I think Centralia is probably feeling the same thing. Boone County government, our, our budget is built on a seventy percent sales tax base. I mean, seventy percent of what we spend is based on sales tax, right? And Matt, you were saying the other day, it's a lower percentage for Centralia.
It's, it's less for us because of, we have, we rely more heavily on property tax than, than Centralia, and certainly Nick County.
Right.
I mean, Nick County, back in nineteen eighty, you know, back the eighties, when they, that was what we used for roads and bridges.
Right, and we, we made the switch from, from property tax to sales tax for the road and bridge fund. And we, we diminished the, the property taxes, you know, we did that voluntary rollback of the property taxes. But still, even y'all's budget is built to a large percentage, not to the huge extent that, that Boone County says, but a large percentage on sales tax. So, on the one hand, this use tax proposal is designed to help you all make up for lost revenue that you're seeing that's going away in, in those online sales, those out-of-state sales. That normally, if there, if those sales had been made in-state with an in-state vendor, you would have seen that sales tax revenue. So, it's designed, on the one hand, to help governments provide those essential services that we all do. I mean, I saw your agenda for tonight and the kinds of things that you have to provide for your constituents. Same thing for Boone County. So, it helps provide that kind of core funding for government. But on the other hand, it also helps to support the local businesses. It, it evens the playing field for a local business so that you, as a business person, can say, yeah, I can, I can compete. I don't have to overcome that huge benefit that somebody has when they can shop out-of-state and they don't have to pay that sales tax. So, that's what, that's what the, the use tax is designed to accomplish. And it's, and it's the same thing, if you all remember when we did the, the use tax fix on the automobiles. It's, it's the same kind of thing. We, it's, it's something that every jurisdiction has to have, ask the voters to approve, or else it's not in place. So, if Centralia chooses to put it, put it on the ballot, that's, that will be your voter's opportunity to vote up or down, just like Boone County, vote up or down as to whether the voters want to have that as part of their tax burden. So, every jurisdiction, if they're going to, if they're going to have it, it's going to have to be voted on by the people. Simple majority, but it's going to have to be voted on by the people. So, right now, again, what we have in place is the state use tax. But for every jurisdiction, we, we're going to have to go to the people. And so, so I think, you know, there's, every jurisdiction within Boone County is going to do that right now. And I think you all probably see it more clearly than folks in other parts of the county. Most of the counties surrounding Boone already have a use tax in place. And this last summer, I went to the opening of the Justice Center in Randolph County. And I don't know how many of you all have seen that. It's, you know, the one over in Huntsville. It's pretty stunning. It's a beautiful facility. It's very, it provides a safe place for the officers, a safe place for the detainees, for all of the county staff. And I talked to the, the county commissioners. And they said, you know what, we paid for this with the use tax. And they said, we couldn't have done it had we not had a use tax in place. And they, and one commissioner said, you know, there's a couple of things I'm really proud of. He said, I'm really proud of this building, but I'm probably been more proud that we were able to get that use tax passed because it made this possible. And having represented people who were in that, the old jail, which was, you know, as we found out to our horror, how, how unsafe a place that was. And that's something that has really benefited their community. Most communities that have put in place a use tax have looked at, again, those core services that we all provide. Most counties have said, let's look at law enforcement. That's a, that's a growing and ongoing need, right? An ongoing need. And then the other thing typically is, you know, unfortunately, as we know, products to maintain our roads and bridges, the costs are skyrocketing. And where we can, you know, what, with what we have, we can maintain, it's very difficult to create new roads. And to, you know, to asphalt a new road, I mean, that's kind of pining the staff from any of us.
And just, do you guys have an estimate? So, three million dollars is what percent increase? If we add the, that you, you will gain additional revenue that will go to a variety of things, including, that leads to my next point. So, so what is, three million dollars is what percent of your current sales tax? Is it ten percent, eight percent?
I think about ten.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, we received a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars from the county from the, in the two different, you know, the, it used to be part A and part B from the road tax, so it's another fourteen thousand. If their tax passes...
It'll be passed along to you.
Then we...
So, yeah.
Somewhere in the neighborhood.
So, you all will see it, not just in, I mean, in, you know, assuming Centralia puts it on the ballot and the folks in Centralia pass it, then you will see that, you know, you will see that bump in, in your revenues to be able to do more for, for your constituents, right? But then we'll also be able to pass along more of the road and bridge tax, on, tax on the allocation because we all have those, the allocation formulas.
So, and that fourteen thousand would be allocated only to road and bridge? And just doing some quick figuring based on the, the, the department, the Department of Revenue figures that we had. We, if we had, if we passed a sales tax, it would be not quite ten percent because we don't get any dollar, as many dollars for capita for sales tax as Columbia does because they, they draw people in, they, they gain, we lose a little. But my, my calculation, I think if, if it passes the, the makes sense test, would be about twenty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars for two thousand sixteen. That's money that...
Well, I mean, yeah.
That, well...
That's laying on the table right now.
Lacrosse lumber charges for it.
Yeah.
If you buy your lumber online, there, the, the builder does not have...
Yeah. Well, and, you know, and so one of the, one of the, one of the concerns that was raised early on, our new county clerk said, you shouldn't put this on the ballot in November because it costs money to run the election. And, and what Matt was alluding to with the Department of Revenue figures was a guy came in from the Department of Revenue and made a presentation to as many people as wanted to come and listen. And, you know, it's like, listen to numbers, y'all, and, but, right. But it was pretty stunning when you started looking at how much money this thing pulls in. And the other piece of it for me, and actually for my colleague from the Southern District, who had been persuaded initially that, gee, we should wait because that election costs money. But when you started thinking, it's three million dollars, and the only, the only way you can collect it or even think about collecting it is to have it on the books. So, until it's, until the voters have authorized it, it's not even something that you can get for it, right? Or even, I mean, it's not due and owed. It's just, it's going someplace else. It's going into somebody else's pocket. It certainly isn't coming to government. It certainly isn't coming to local vendors. It's go, it's something that we can't even stop. So, that was, that was very persuasive, I think, to most people that were in the room because the dollars were such that, oh, my goodness, if we don't get it on the books as quickly as possible, all of that revenue is just downstream. So, it was something that was, I think, very persuasive to, to people that were there. And, you know, when we started doing the math, it was like, yeah, it, it more than makes up for the cost of the election. Plus, it takes Department of Revenue, they said it was three to five months in terms of implementation of getting all of that stuff in gear. So, once, once your voters say yes, then it takes revenue a while for them to get it in place so that, you know, when, when all of us make our little online purchases, they know what flavor of tax to charge. Because I live in unincorporated Boone County, and what do I pay? So, do you have any questions?
I mean, since you raised it, just to carry out some questions, is it tracked based on the shipping zip code? How do they, how do they track that?
Well, they track it by, yeah, where the purchase is made. And the purchase, like, as an individual, the purchase is made at your zip code. But it's, that's part of what, what revenue... But it's, that's part of what rev, what revenue has to determine. I mean, they have to, they have to look to see who you are, where you are, and where the, where the sale is made.
So, if, if somebody from Columbia comes to Centraria Library, takes a purchase on our library computers, is that the location that they charge the use tax, or is it from their home address?
That's gonna be from their home address.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, they might, I mean, they...
Unless they have shipped to the library.
Unless they have shipped to the library, and, you know, but I mean, but the thing is, your credit card is, you know, because you, because you think about it, your credit card, you have to say, "This is what, this is my billing, my billing..."
Okay, I want to see if they're gonna use it by the IP address or the actual shopping address.
I mean, and I'm sure people will try to find a way around it, right? You know? I mean, that's, you know, that's everything. And honestly, this, you know, I don't know about y'all, but this, this has made me think, be much more mindful about the purchases that I make. You know? And, and quite honestly, when I was in Sturgeon the other night talking to their, their chamber, and I said, "You know, that, to me, it's an easier sell in a community like Sturgeon and like Centraria." And I, and in fact, I talked about Centraria because you all have that buy-local program. And you really, you know, and it's, yeah, and it's, because it's community. And I think it's easier for communities that have that sense of community, that, that understand that what I'm doing directly affects the person whose business is next to mine, you know, who I sit next to in church or whatever. I mean, it affects us, it affects our friends, it affects our neighbors. And so, you know, I think it's an e, it's kind, it's almost an easier sell to people when you have that sense of community. Columbia, it's just, it's harder because just to explain something to people and, and they don't have that sense of community. So it's a much more difficult process to me just to try to say, you know, it makes, it, it, it matters. It matters to someone that you know. You know, if you don't care, if you don't care about government, think about your neighbor. And that, to me, I think, is a, is, is part of what, what this is. So, this, this was an educational piece put on by the Boone County Commission. But if you have any other questions, I know Matt, I think Tim have, have my cell number, but just in case, it's five seven three eight six four five one nine seven. You're more than welcome to call me, and I, I'll try to answer any questions.
What's going on with the Centraria fireside guard?
And that's cool. I know James has my cell phone, and I think the chief has it as well.
It's gonna be in the minutes, too.
There you go. You know, so, it's, it's, it is absolutely no worse than when I'm, when I'm at church Sunday morning because sometimes I do altar guild and the ushers don't show up, and I hand somebody a bulletin and they say, "About my road." So... So, I mean, that happens all the time. So anyhow, please, give me a call if you have any questions. And if there's anything that we can do when Centraria decides that you guys wanna do it, whatever help we can give. We're hope, we're hoping that we're plowing the field for you all, so it's an easier time for you. If there are groups to whom we need to speak to, to increase the education up here, please let me know or let Matt know, and so we can get the word out. Because it really is a question of educating people so that they understand it, so that they don't think, "Oh, my gosh, I'm being charged twice," you know, or whatever. I mean, we just need to say, "This is the purpose." And again, I think for your community, it fits right in with what you do. You know, I mean, this is what you people live, so...
And business purchases for resale are exempt, just like sales tax, right?
Yeah. It's, it's, sales tax, it truly is the mirror of the sales tax.
And one other, just to make sure, we did have, we did go to the voters, and we did pass a use tax for the purchase of vehicles in Centraria. That one has that.
You've already done that.
Yeah, but only vehicles. Everything else, the...
Yeah. Which was because of that Missouri Supreme Court case that gave us a, a very short window to fix, right? But, and you know, unfortunately, a lot of this, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to do this work had Congress actually passed the Marketless Fairness Act, but, another story.
And the defense decided that the internet needed help, so there weren't, there would be no taxes. I'm just speaking for myself, I think this internet thing's gonna work. Maybe it's gonna make it. Maybe it's time to...
Maybe first go ahead and embrace it, right? So thank you so much for letting me come up and talk, and as I said, give me a call if you have any questions. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Janet.
Thank you. See you later.
Have a good evening.
You, too. Bye-bye.
Janet?
Yes, sir.
Just a second. If you get, this pass is not given, did this pass? Will these funds go into general revenue for the county?
It, it, it will go into general revenue. We have spoken, what, we have spoken about it in a very, kind of...
Non, non...
Non, non-committal way. We have great needs, as you know, we have great needs in law enforcement. And, and the technology piece is what's, is unfortunately what's driving a lot of what you need, what the sheriff needs. So, I know that we'll be able, I mean, he's wanting to have to get some proactive detectives, and he needs another investigator. Right now, funding that is just hard. And, and, and unfortunately, we keep needing to, you know, people keep saying, "About my road." So...
And this morning, at seven oh five, jail count was two fifty-six.
Yeah. And, you know, and the, and the state is telling us now, I don't know if you all got the, the memos from the Department of Corrections, they say to us, "Well, yeah, we owe Boone County six hundred thousand dollars." Yeah, six hundred thousand dollars in, in out-of-county housing. So, have fun with that. I mean, they, you know, because they, they owe us a certain amount on that per diem. They're supposed to reimburse us when those folks go to DOC. But DOC has, has been inadequately funded for how many years? So, there we are with a six hundred, six hundred thousand dollar bill right now. And that's every county in the state. So, yeah, it's, I mean, it's an ongoing problem, but if we can, if we can help local governments and at the same time help vendors, and I, and so I'm telling y'all now, I'm not buying any more saddles online. Just saying.
This is unrelated to the sales tax?
Yeah.
You can grab the door and dash out of it.
I'm gonna leave a few of these.
Excellent. So, I think we talked a little bit ago against the ambulance in Centraria, and I did talk to Mike Sinick at Jim.
Jim Sinick.
At Boone. Boone, a couple weeks ago, talked to him, he called me back and talked directly, and he shared with me that although it had been discussed as a possible among a lot of other... cost-aided measures to cut ambulance service, that they were not doing it at this time. And you haven't heard anything different since then?
I have not. I, I ever so briefly attended a Board of Trustees meeting for the hospital today because I had been told that we'd been taken off the agenda. So I was there for like a half an hour saying, "Damn it, oh, why are they looking at me like I have three heads?" But they, I mean, but the biggest problem is, quite honestly, as you all know, healthcare is undergoing a lot of traumatic, you know, right? And, and the, the person who was talking when I got there was Lipstein, who was, who is the, I guess he's now retiring from BJC. He was the head of BJC for, for the last little while. And he was talking about what's, what's driving a lot of the, the results that we're seeing, especially in, in more rural parts of the, of the country. And we're seeing it worse in, in, in states like Missouri where we didn't expand Medicaid. You know, and we're getting, and we're getting hit, and we're taking those hits and taking those hits because, because the dollars aren't here. And so, you know, the trustees and BJC are trying to figure out a way to balance the lack of funding that's coming from the federal government because of the failure to expand and, and the needs of our communities.
Yeah, I know one of the things that you talked about was the use of the ambulance service or something other than what was originally intended. And that's, that's, that's something they're gonna try to look at as well.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not supposed to be a taxi.
Right. Well, and, you know, and, and some of that stuff, you know, we're, we're looking at, and the chief has been involved in, in this, we're looking at ways to more effectively and appropriately use resources for those folks with mental health issues, you know, so that we aren't utilizing, as you say, the ambulance service as a taxi, we're not utilizing the chief as, as somebody to, you know, to routinely take people to, to MUPC. So those are things that we're looking at, and we're trying to come up with better ways of utilizing our medical resources and our law enforcement resources to, to care for that. So it's just, it's, it's very complex. Wouldn't it be nice if we had a lot more than...
Commissioner, I need one piece of clarification before you hit the road.
Yes, sir.
If the voters pass Proposition U, did you say that that would, that would positively affect the amount of road and bridge revenues?
It has, it, it hasn't been allocated, but it will be available for use. And it will certainly help Centraria.
Even if, even if Centraria does not pass its own version of Proposition U?
Because, because there will be flowover from the county to Centraria.
Because, isn't, isn't, okay, so then, that is where, is part of your sales tax dedicated to road and bridges? Okay, so that part would increase...
Right.
Right.
There will be some, there will be some...
There's like a half set that's just road and bridge.
Right, so there will be some pushover. And, and what we have talked about on a very, as, as we said, a very kind of generic level is, and I think, I'm not speaking out of turn, I'm just one commissioner of three, but my colleagues have been very supportive of the notion of using funds for the road and bridge projects, you know, going into road and bridge maintenance and into law enforcement. So there's, there is support for those two areas. Not that that would, it would be to the exclusion of other things, but those, those have been identified needs. So, what, what percentage would go there, you know, I can't say. But I know, but I know there's, I know there's, there's support for it. Yeah, so I...
The next question's a legal question, so I'll just, might say that.
Well, I think you got, you got your wire. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Janet.
Have a, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right. Open the floor for comments and citizens, and to close that, please, I'll just... Public hearing, open the floor for public hearing. Permitting section thirty-one dash forty-four dot one of the Centurion City Code concerning the wireless communication facilities in the city of Centraria. Any discussion on that, Matt?
Uh, I include a memo in the packet, and... I am not seeing the memo. But, oh, here, okay, it's after, yeah. It's on, it's on page, I forget this, how many page it's on, fifth. Uh, and Charles was the, the, the driving force behind this and did all the, the legal work, obviously. But we did advertise this in the Centraria Fireside Guard on Centraria City Code, as required by law. We had a public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission on October fifth, the meetings are in the packet meeting. Minutes are, of the meeting are in the packet, and there was an unanimous recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to pass this. This gives the city as much authority as state law will grant us for regulating new wireless communication towers in the city of Centraria. As drafted by Charles. That's, for the public hearing, that's all.
Do you have any external views for or against, or the clean cases you call by this thing?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you for asking. Uh, we have had no letters or, no one spoken...
Correspondence.
No, no correspondence, no one came and spoke in favor or against it at the Planning and Zoning Commission. The meeting lasted six minutes. I, we did have, well, as you all know, we have had proposals, and particularly one in front of the Martinsburg Bank drew a substantial amount of public input and all but against. Your way of saying.
All right. Close the public hearing. Move into the action agenda, finance. Authorizing the mayor of Centurion, Missouri to enter into an agreement with Piper, Jaffrey, and Company of Leewood, Kansas for financial services. This is orders required, two readings.
The, or, agreement in front of you is actually written to have me sign it. We, I've talked to Todd Gough, and he'll get us a new agreement. So this is, uh, this, so the, the exhibit A that you have in front of you, where it reads, where, where my name is there and my title, it will be replaced by Tim, Granky, and city, and mayor. And that's the one that will actually be presented for signing. There's, there's no problem with that. Every other thing about it will handle itself.
All right. Alderman Wilkins, would you introduce this one, please?
I will, please.
Two one eight five.
Move the bill number two one eight five, be given its first reading by title only.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-one eighty-five be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, continue, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Centraria, Missouri to enter into an agreement with Piper, Jaffrey, and Company of Leewood, Kansas for financial services. I move that bill number two one eight five be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-one eighty-five be adopted by a roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, continue, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Centraria, Missouri to enter into an agreement with Piper, Jaffrey, and Company of Leewood, Kansas for financial services. I move that bill number two one eight five be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-one eighty-five be adopted by a roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, roll call vote, please, sir.
Alderman Madley?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Borat?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-one eighty-five passes, now becomes orders number...
Two nine two three.
Two nine two three, thank you very much. Permit some licensing, nothing scheduled, does that still case?
There's still a case.
All right. Legal, permitting section thirty-one dash four. Thirty-one dash forty-four dot one of Centurion City Code concerning the wireless communication facility in the city of Centurion, Missouri. Employees' Orders. That's probably... It, it doesn't say that.
Yeah, yeah, the ordinance should say.
Orders. All right. Alderman Madley, would you can do this one, please?
Bill number...
Two one eight six.
Move that bill number two one eight six be given a first reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-one eighty-six be given its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Continue, please.
Bill to create an order, an ordinance repealing and replacing section thirty-one dash forty-four point one of the Centurion City Code. Move that bill number twenty-one eighty-six be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-one eighty-six be given its second reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, continue, please.
An ordinance repealing and replacing section thirty-one dash forty-four point one of the Centurion City Code. Move that bill number twenty-one eighty-six be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-one eighty-six be adopted by roll call vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, roll call vote, please, sir.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Borat?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Madley?
Yes.
All right, by your vote... All right, by your vote, the number twenty-one eighty-six passes and now becomes ordinance number...
Two nine two one.
Number two, permitting section two dash eighty-one of the Centurial City Code concerning the powers and duties of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the city of Centralia, Missouri. And this is the ordinance requires two readings.
This, this part of the, uh, this ordinance, uh, is necessary because part of the previous ordinance makes a specific protocol for approving wireless communication towers that, uh, when a conditional use permit is required, that the conditional use permit not only go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but also to the Board of Alderman.
What page is that on?
It is on page fifty-two.
Yep.
Fifty-two?
Yeah, it's right after the memo.
Sixty-two, fifty-two?
Fifty-two. So, in most, I'm just gonna tell them, generally, it just essentially, um, makes sense though the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends whether to accept or deny an application, and then the Board of Alderman can, um, grant or deny.
Does, does the Board of Alderman have to follow the will of the planning PG?
No, you get final say.
So the PG, the PG could recommend approval, and the Board of Alderman could say, no way.
Right, because it's such a big issue, just don't wanna have the Planning and Zoning Commission recommending a hundred and fifty foot tower, you know?
Okay.
Right here downtown, and you guys be the ones that catch heat for it. They were to approve it, but since you have final say, you can say, no, we're not gonna do that.
Okay. All right.
They'll, they'll pass a recommendation on to you for these, but for instance, there's a Board of, there's a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the twenty-sixth about a self-storage facility in the C in B two. That would not come to you.
Okay.
If it's, that if they, if that's granted at the Planning and Zoning Commission, that's the end of it, they get that use.
Okay.
That condition is.
Alderman, may I introduce this one? Bill number...
Two one eight seven.
Move that bill number twenty-one eighty-seven be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-one eighty-seven be given its first reading by title only. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, continue, please. An ordinance adding subsection K to section two dash eight one of the Centurial City Code. Bill number two one eight seven be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-one eighty-seven be given its second reading by title only. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, continue, please. An ordinance adding subsection K to section two dash eight one of the Centurial City Code. I move that bill number twenty-one eighty-seven be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-one eighty-seven be adopted by roll call vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Borat?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-one eighty-seven passes and now becomes ordinance number...
Two nine two five.
All right, number three. Accepting the conveyance of an electrical utility easement to the city of Centralia, Missouri across the north side of four twenty West Singleton. This is the ordinance requires two readings.
I promise this is the last time we have to talk about this property. Now I better not do that. As, as, as far as I know, this is the last time we'll have to talk about this property for some time ago. This is the last piece, is the electric easement across the northern border. This now all belongs to, all this, um, land now belongs to Boyd Harris and because of our previous action. And he can now grant this easement for the utility line that is in existence.
Alderman Rogers, introduce this one, please.
Bill number...
Two one eight eight.
Move that bill number two one eight eight be given its first reading by title only.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-one eighty-eight be given its first reading by title only. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, continue, please.
An ordinance accepting the dedication of electric easement across the north side of four two zero West Singleton Street. Move that bill number twenty-one eighty-eight be given its second reading by title only.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-one eighty-eight be given its second reading by title only. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, continue, please.
An ordinance accepting the dedication of an electric easement across the north side of four two zero West Singleton Street. Move that bill number two one eight eight be adopted by roll call vote, second.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-one eighty-eight be adopted by roll call vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Borat?
Yes.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-one eight, passes and now becomes ordinance number...
Two nine two six.
Authorizing the mayor of Centralia, Missouri to enter into an agreement with Energy Solutions Professionals LLC of Oberlin Park, Kansas for an investment-grade audit on certain buildings of the city of Centralia, Missouri. And this is the ordinance requires two readings.
This is the ordinance, this is the first step. If the, as we talked about last week, if they're, if they come up with a project that would save us money, and then we choose to back out, uh, are, we are at risk of spending two thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars. And that's, that would be the, that, that would be our loss if we, they said we can make, save you money here, and you, and we choose not to do it. We, we retain their study, we get away with implementing it later. If we find, if they find a project, we decide to move forward, we hope that isn't woven into the cost of the project.
All right. Alderman Hudson, would you introduce this one, please?
It's not on my list since he was on the...
Two one eight nine.
Move that bill number two one eight nine be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-one eighty-nine be given its first reading by title only. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, continue, please.
Bill number two one eight nine, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri to enter into an agreement with Energy Solutions Professionals LLC of Oberlin Park, Kansas for an investment-grade audit on certain buildings of the city of Centralia, Missouri. Move that bill number two one eight nine be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-one eighty-nine be given its second reading by title only. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, continue, please.
Move that bill number two one eight nine be adopted by roll call vote.
Second.
Yeah, we have to do the...
The replay.
Replay.
Sorry.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Centralia, Missouri to enter into an agreement with Energy Solutions Professionals LLC of Oberlin Park, Kansas for an investment-grade audit on certain buildings of the city of Centralia, Missouri. That was for the second reading. Move that bill number two one eight nine be adopted by roll call vote, second.
Have a motion second that bill number twenty-one eighty-nine be adopted by roll call vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Lee?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yes.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Borat?
Yes.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
All right, by your vote, bill number twenty-one eighty-nine passes and now becomes ordinance number...
Two nine two seven.
All right. Old business, we have an old business. All right, new business. Uh, appointments. We do have an appointment tonight to the Planning and Zoning Commission. In fact, that we've appointed Alderman Hudson to the Board of Alderman. His seat on the Planning and Zoning Commission as a citizen becomes vacant. So replacing him on that is, uh, talk with Brian, the mayor.
Brian?
Mayor.
Mayor?
Yes, he is a, uh, works with the Cub Scouts. He also, his wife works part-time up here in City Hall.
He also works for Origin Construction. He's got an associate's degree in, and he sent me his entire resume. And then I've gotten the wrong paper, but he's, he's, he's been a project manager for, um, for, uh, the, um, uh, Origin Construction for some time. Oh, he's got a associate's degree in drafting design technology and industrial technology for the Overly Area College. He's...
So he's not inexperienced?
He's not inexperienced.
He's not experienced, so move that straight.
My move, we approve the mayor's appointment of Brian Mayr to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. Have a motion second to approve the mayor's appointment of Brian Mayr to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, we'll go through...
You'll complete the end of Robert's term.
Yes. Yeah, twenty-two.
I didn't know it was committed by him.
Probably a ridiculous committee, so, okay.
What was his term in?
Twenty-two. September of twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
Have a motion second, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, all right, thank you. Were you able to make contact with the library board?
Yeah, and I've sent an email out lately, I guess, um, yes, uh, Jerry Dolins, those are the two, sir.
Okay, would you like to appoint Jerry Dolins to the position of the library board? This has been vacant for quite some time, and, uh, she does live in the library district, so... She is a real estate agent here.
Yeah, real estate agent. Talking about her first trips to Centralia when she lived in Clarkworth to visit the library. She'd like to get back and active in the city of...
I move we approve the, uh, mayor's appointment of Jerry Dolins to the library board.
Thank you. Have a motion second to approve the mayor's appointment of Jerry Dolins to the library board. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, all right. The technology committee?
Um, I'm asking that, just to clarify, that we reappoint the entire committee. And the committee members, uh, that we have remaining on there would be yourself, Alderman David Wilkins, City Clerk Heather Russell, and myself, and then to replace Bob Bias, um, uh, and spoke to you today, that, that, that candid we'd like to add, asked to be appointed would be Tim Krebs. So those five people would be appointed. There, we don't, we've never established terms, it's kind of a...
End hook me?
Yeah, for life.
Okay.
Life.
Yeah. Okay. Do you may have any objections to that? So, make a motion to...
Second.
Have a motion second to reappoint and adjust the technology committee. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, thank you very much. Yeah.
Yes, we do, that's another reason, so I don't want to...
We will determine a date for that, I mean, sure. Okay. The second annual Veterans Day five K, ten K run is, uh, in the planning phase right now. That will occur on November eleventh, again, starting at the, uh, flagpole up there in the city cemetery. The funds raised from this event, the will to support the Admiral flags, uh, you recall the story a couple weeks ago. Several of the five by eight flags and the flagpoles are damaged and need to be replaced. So these funds that we raised went up to go, uh, perpetuate the Admiral flags.
Is that because of wind?
Yes, yeah, because of wind and, uh, several flags have been, um, ripped up, torn up beyond repair. We've got some lady that, that does some minor repairs to them when they're aimed to be repaired. Several of them are pretty tore up, so... We only fly them four or five times a year, but, uh, depending on the weather pattern at that time will determine how tore up they get, how long they last.
What was the date on that again?
November eleventh. It's a Saturday, the run will start at nine, at nine AM, and it's five K, four, ten K, so...
You all need, that, that side over there needs to participate this year. Right, that old side over there needs to participate.
Everybody, yeah.
Well, it's that side.
Okay.
Why this side over that side? Is there like a challenge, like this side versus that side, this side versus that side?
All right. And it's, that's all I have for this time. More, more information will come out on that before I sign up online. All right, Matt?
Uh, monthly report is in your packet, if you have any questions. I, I have a, a preferred date based on what I understand the hunting season is, and et cetera, et cetera. Plus, we need to get, talk, we need to start having discussions about both, um, revenue enhancement for the general fund, and then also we've got the, the three major topics would be general fund, uh, the water sewer bond issue, and the, um, report on, uh, the, uh, follow-up on the salaries.
What's the preferred date?
November fourth, November fourth.
That's the first weekend we got to grill, first weekend.
We gotta...
So maybe the next weekend.
So what, so yes, we're doing it.
Thanks.
Every commander call, every, every commander call me, I'll say, we're working on it.
Okay.
Where, where's, where's grill?
Fort Lauderdale.
Oh, so it's a retreat, yes.
Good, that's fine. I've got some grill that we can eat.
Well, we'll see, so you're out on November fourth. When's the first day of deer season?
Five K.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
And then the next weekend...
Good luck at nine o'clock, so you can get out in the morning, go kill a deer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see me running it anywhere, so I'm fine.
Okay.
So are you saying the eleventh, that Veterans Day is okay, or no?
Yeah, no.
No, no, right?
No, well, if you're having a run, what are you gonna have it, dude?
Yeah, that's right, oh, that's right, you can't, that's right, you can't do that. So that leaves us the eighteenth, and then we're into, and after that, we're into...
Well, November tenth.
We could do it on a city holiday, but then...
Holiday, but I don't think I'm on holiday.
It seems a little sacrilegious, but it may be one of the things that work.
What is the regular birthday too, so?
We're looking at Friday, November tenth, but that's, the city's off, but...
Yeah.
That's not a...
I'm not.
Or for holiday.
I don't know.
Yeah. Schools are not off.
Never off. Columbia schools are off, but that doesn't...
I'm probably cutting that down, but...
I'll take a court session, November tenth. That's a Friday?
School is off.
Yeah, school, the school is not off, but...
Yeah.
It's an option.
All right, I'll send out some, some, uh, some options, and we'll see what... Unless you guys wanna do a... I'm probably, it'll be a long evening meeting, and so I'm trying to do it on a...
Define long, it's Thursday.
Four hours, maybe three, four hours. Usually provides a program. Or she makes us cinnamon roll.
You made waffles.
It's, it's a, it's a... You did, it was great.
You're doing that again, aren't you?
You pretty much just spent the entire time. Yeah. What's this talking about, Sam?
Hey, it sounds good. All right.
We'll make something work, but it's important that we have those discussions.
Yeah. Okay. City attorney, do you have anything for us?
Nope.
Well, I have something for you. So, uh, we appreciate all your efforts for, uh, being our city, our city attorney. And, uh, I would like to, uh, try to open a, get, get pretty happy with a plan.
What would you say, I appreciate the, the all of us, the chance to... What would you say, I appreciate the, the all of us, the chance to.
So this is, uh, presented to Charles Thompson, City Attorney, City of Centralia, Missouri. And appreciative of serving as interim city attorney, October twenty sixteen, October twenty seventeen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Can you speak to the left?
No, I just appreciate, uh, allowing us to be of service and, you know.
Yeah.
Hope you guys for years.
Yeah. Yeah. So. Don't be a stranger. Yeah. All right, Heather?
Um, just a reminder that the regional division meeting for MML is in Jeff City this Wednesday, I do have that in registered. If anybody else wants to go, please let me know tonight so I can get your registration.
It's a good chance to meet other, all of them from other cities.
It is a good time and it's free meal, food is usually very good.
Is it this Wednesday?
Yeah.
I don't know if they're gonna have a, a, or not. Sometimes they have beer.
I don't know, was it, was it really?
But it's a good time.
Yeah.
All right, as may arise, uh, did you look up about the letter we sent out in the hearing?
Um, we, um, I mean, we're continuing to pursue.